Apologize for the delay, everybody. Becky, are you still waiting for some documents from somebody? Should we just go ahead? You can just start without that, then? Okay. Well, I don't know what the first one said. What that recommendation was.
That was recommended.
That was recommended? Okay. We can just get started. It's taken her a little bit. Okay. I'm seeing about five minutes after anyways. Everybody ready? It's, I know it's 7:05, but I'd like to call the city council meeting of Oglesby to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number four. Public comment on agenda items only. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Spencer Duncan, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband Brian Duncan to inform you of what's happening on our property at 132 Caitlin Court. I want to start by saying that I am a lifelong and fourth-generation resident of Oglesby and brought my husband to this town. And it is unfortunate that what you're about to hear is what the city of Oglesby puts residents wanting to invest in Oglesby through. It should not be this difficult to make a lifelong decision and investment in our future. Our entire life and future is in the hands of the city, who has admittedly made several mistakes. These mistakes should not be at the expense of Brian and I, who are taxpayers in the town. If you look around neighboring towns, there are many developments in houses being built currently, and to our knowledge, ours is the only home in the city of Oglesby this year. I want you to think about this as I tell our story. I have communicated with many people about this experience, and I owe it to the taxpayers of Oglesby to know what is happening in their city to honest citizens like us. I hope after hearing our story, you will consider what you should do. If you need anything clarified or have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. The following information is considered a synopsis of events rather than an exhaustive list of which there are many. We turned in our building permit application to build our home with appropriate documentation on June 12, 2023. We were told that they would present this documentation to Mr. Stefanelle and give back to us. We were being asked to submit architectural drawings, to include plumbing drawings, HVAC drawings, electrical drawings, drainage drawings, truss drawings, floor dikes drawings, and our house drawn on the lot. Mrs. Kleiner continued to state that I needed a plaque of survey and architectural drawings, and that what I had submitted from my draftsman was not sufficient. I asked her to obtain a plaque of survey, and she told me the county should have one and to contact the county and vote from there. They did not have one on file, only a subdivision map. A consultation with an architect from Studio K in Princeton looked at our materials from our draftsman and compared it to the city ordinance and stated, "In my professional opinion, you do not need an architect to provide you anything further." I contacted my draftsman to see if he could provide me the requested plumbing, HVAC, electrical drawings, drainage drawings, truss drawings, floor dikes drawings that were being requested, and he said in all the years he's been doing this, he never provided such drawings and has never been asked to do that. His full-time job is a draftsman for many large cities, including Champaign, Bloomingdale General, Peoria, and he has drawn numerous houses that are currently built in the city of Oglesby. Current city ordinance for building permits applies to both commercial and residential structures, which deems many of the requirements not applicable to residential structures. As presented above, there were several documents required of us that were not in the ordinance at the time of application. These include architectural drawings, plumbing drawings, HVAC drawings, drainage drawings, electrical drawings, truss drawings, floor dikes drawings. Mr. Stefanie also, Stefanelle also requested that we submit a drawing with our house on it noting the setbacks, which was drawn and submitted, notifying the city of our desired setback thirty feet from the curb with the building permit approval. Additionally, my contractor's licenses were not verified by the city clerk and/or commissioner prior to building permit approval and prior to the beginning of our excavation. It was later determined, once the stop work order was issued, that my excavator did not have a current city license. Had this been verified prior to excavation and stopped right away, we would not have started excavation on our home yet. My contractor informed me that he was meeting with the commissioner and building inspector on Friday, June 16, and all left that meeting in agreement. Following that meeting, a final phone conversation with Mr. Stefanelle that afternoon, everything was noted as good to go with phone confirmation from Mr. Stefanelle. The house was staked out on the lot prior to approval for eight weeks and verified to be thirty feet from the curb. I asked if we needed to venture down the road of a variance, and he said, "No, he sees the drawing right there, and it shows thirty feet from the curb. There should be no issue." The lot remained staked until excavation was started on August 8. Excavation was completed on August 11, following significant delay due to the building permit approval process past our planned start date of June 19. Our contractors were then forced to take other jobs as it was unknown when our building permit was going to be approved. On August 15, we received a phone call from Brian Spelich saying, "City received a phone call about the placement of our home." The city could not find the drawing of the house on the lot that was given to them with the permit application. I received a copy of this application and documents that included that drawing. The city clerk's office claims they never had that form, although Mr. Stefanelle referenced that form in a previous phone call and said we were good to go. I had submitted a FOIA request for variances on the street. I received the document back that there are none currently, although there are other houses in violation of the setback the city is requesting. A specific example of this house is the address of 122 Caitlin Court, which is believed to be twenty-five feet or less from the curb. However, there is no variance on file. This information was obtained from the contractor of that address who built that home. The city would have access to this information, and it is believed that Chamblin has measured some driveways, as it was witnessed by myself seeing employees from Chamblin walking with what appeared to be a laser to measure other driveways after measuring on our lot the same day. We informed clearly our planned setback for our home, and the city approved the permit with stated setback.
Let me interrupt, let me interrupt you just briefly. I apologize for interrupting you, but I just want to remind you that there is technically a five-minute time limit that we have for public comments stuff. Are you almost complete with your?
We informed clearly our planned setback for home. The city approved the permit with stated setback. In a meeting on August 16, Mrs. Kleiner stated that the city was acknowledging that they made a mistake in the, made a mistake in issuing the building permit, and Mr. Stefanelle agreed, and that is why they want to remedy their mistake. They would like me to follow this ordinance, thus moving back the house nine feet entirely to be twenty-five feet from the property tent. I asked if we could get a variance, and both Mrs. Kleiner and Mr. Stefanelle were adamant we would not, we would not receive a variance. We submitted the variance request on August 24 for the chronological events to get this day in supporting documentation. Also submitted was BLH Concrete's estimate to clearly move the foundation back to ensure longevity of the home for structural safety. On September 19, we received a letter via email that provided structural engineering recommendation from the city hired Scott, recommendation from city hired Scott Brown from Willett Hoffman and Associates with three options for ensuring structural safety of the home. Two options, I'm sorry. City made their decision to choose option B and seek their own anonymous estimate from a concrete contract over option B. This estimate is significantly different than the estimate from ours. City's anonymous estimate was estimated to be around a third of the cost of ours. The city's estimate doesn't take into consideration dirt hauling away and bringing back as their request is putting it inside of the house where there's no room. Extra footage of the driveway costs, extension of sewer and water, sump connections, and cost for recommendation of the city for Midwest testing to oversee controlled fill. Completing the home as requested by the city, which could have been corrected or the building permit was approved, could end up costing myself and my wife tens of thousands of dollars of a project that early brick-based raising costs of materials and high interest rates. The financial burden of this mistake alone would be incredible and unaffordable, a mistake which is not our own. Currently, we are delayed four months before this all be done. Now is affecting cost of materials, Deane's estimates, and Deane's estimates invalid due to constant fluctuating costs. When Mr. Stefanelle called us to inform that there should be no issue moving forward, a question was asked to him who needed to get a variance at the time. He reiterated that he saw the paper and it's, and that was submitted and noted thirty-foot setback from the curb, and we should be good to go with no issues moving forward. This is the same paper that the city was unable to find at the meeting that clerk's office claimed it never saw. The building permit packet, a copy which was submitted originally, was submitted with the house setback drawing with the variance request, with an additional original copy for its ease of reading. We followed all of Mr. Stefanelle's requests, paid hundreds of extra dollars to be in compliance to receive our building permit and received it on June 22, 2023. All the information needed was communicated and approved. We should not be going through this, as we informed the city accurately, and now we are paying for the price of the city's mistake. How much taxpayer money has already been spent on attorney fees, structural engineering fees, and other costs for something that was already approved? We would like to keep our house where it is, as we have asked specifically before we got the building permit if we needed to file a variance, and it was agreed upon and specifically noted that we are placing a house thirty feet from the curb on the drawing that Mr. Stefanelle requested. We never got this, if the document did say that, based on his requirements. Moving the home back significantly reduces privacy for both the south neighbor's backyard as south windows will be in, the south windows on the home would be pushed further into the backyard. Should this variance not be granted, I'm sorry, not the variance, but should this not be granted, the city will incur ten thousands of dollars of remedied situation that couldn't be left as it is, not hurt anyone or anything. End of your time, consideration.
Thank you much. Is there any other public comments on agenda items only? Barring none, we will move on. Number five. Approved minutes from September 18, 2023 city council meeting. So I'll make a mention here, someone want to read, September 18. So this is the second time the minutes from this meeting have been brought forth. In this version of the minutes, there have been several details scrubbed from them on what was presented at the previous meeting. While minutes are indeed a summary and not a verbatim retelling of the meeting, they are indeed supposed to be a legal summary of, summary record of completed actions, discussions, and motions. So I will say that there are two areas of concern I have for these minutes. One, I don't believe them to be detailed enough. That is perhaps just my opinion, though. Number two, it contains items in there already that are opinions of one commissioner on a topic which I don't believe to be true, but a political statement. Yet another opinion of a commissioner is missing, which is proven wrong by what might be read later in this meeting. And then the legal opinion and recommendation of the city attorney is missing, which also matches the legal opinion that was given by the mayor on the subject. Then the mayor also gave his legal opinion on why the policy against labor law, which are also missing. So I ask, why should the minutes include Commissioner Utis's opinion but exclude all others? I recommend that all those legal opinions and viewpoints be added to the minutes, especially any from the city attorney. In fact, I could see a valid argument being made that if there ever any legal opinions offered, the ones that must be recorded are the ones from the city attorney. After all, that's why we're here. I recommend all these relevant details be added to the minutes for transparency. Is there any comments, additions, removals on any of that?
I just like to say for the record that I did not ask to have anything put in the minutes. I did not talk to Becky to say, "Becky, please make sure that my statement is put in there." I had no involvement in the process, so I just want to put that like this.
I agree with that, that, and that is understandable. My, my concern is, so if you look at what was originally on the last one.
I'm sorry, it wasn't on.
I'm sorry, did you want to say it again?
No, that's okay.
Okay. I agree with what you're saying. What I, what I don't think a lot of the people realize is, if you look at the original minutes, there's actually very little that I had anything to do with, with asking to put on there. About the biggest ones I had was that the, the attorney's comments be put on there, and then I wanted the comment on there that, that you stated that you wanted to send it to the labor attorney to make sure it was compliance with ordinance and state law. And really, that was the only other thing, but now it's been scrubbed to where there's a lot of details removed. And I don't, I mean, it's up to you guys what you want to approve, but for transparency, I believe in adding more details to minutes. I mean, I know we have the, the video recording of all this, but the official record is the actual minutes.
Apparently, there's some confusion here. I believe the confusion consists of, one of the things here, the most important rule for discussion during meetings is that no one may speak a second time until everyone who wished to do so has spoken once. This is critical. It seems as if like you always try to get your opinion across first and foremost before we even get to discuss anything. You read out a, a long statement here, which in my, my opinion biases people against what we would have to say. I don't understand why you're reading off things before we ever even have a chance to talk about anything. Under Roberts' rules, the council has the first opportunity to speak, and you get to speak last. If you would like, people may pass and wait until the end of the round to speak. The chair must also wait. He or she doesn't have the right to speak after each person. We recommend chair does not make motions to speaks and votes last. I just, it seems to be becoming a habit that you read off this thing and it's, it's biased towards us, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, we can definitely look at that later. That is news to me. That's not how that works. The chair has the first opportunity to speak before he opens the floor.
That's how you feel.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have something to say about it.
Sure.
The minutes should state that this was what was discussed. This person spoke in opposition. This person spoke in favor of. This person made a motion. This person seconded. This is what happened. When we start getting into typing in quotes and everything else, you may as well have a court reporter come in here and just transcribe the whole council meeting. I think the issue was, when I remembered the last meeting, was that somebody went into the clerk's office, and we had discussed this. It wasn't a commissioner, it was you, the mayor, that wanted to add all these things in. And my point was, this is the time where we're supposed to talk about it, and if there's something that you feel wasn't portrayed correctly as far as a position that was taken, that's where we can make that change. Before the fact, it's inappropriate to do that because then you're going in and you're trying to bias, whether it's you, whether it's a commissioner, anybody. So if it should be done, and there's discussion, you, there's something that you feel wasn't portrayed correctly about a position that you took or that a commissioner may have taken, now is the time where we can discuss that. If we're going to transcribe every single quote that each one of us has made, you may as well bring in a court reporter, and then that, that serves no value at that point. Why even, why even have a video?
Well, I'll make a point about some of the things you said there. I don't believe the best place to do it is live at the meeting. For example, if you look at the second page, let's take one that nobody has an issue with, right? Baldridge then updated the council on the Malik Substation Project, asking the council permission to go out for bid equipment, blah, 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 blah. I think we can all agree that has value in being in the minutes, right? Let's say, for example, when we get these minutes to us handed this up Friday for a packet, I look at that and I go, "That's not in there." Are you saying by that, by that valid argument you're making, I should, we should wait until the meeting is live to make that comment, to try to get that?
Let's give a real-life example here.
Oh, sure, I'll give you rules.
Under the new business, Curran then told the council that he had an issue with how an item was removed from the agenda last meeting and the use of point of order by Commissioner Baldridge when he, Curran, tried to discuss the item at the last meeting. I would like to state, you were wrong, and you're stating this is not debatable. The chair decides. The chair does not decide. I correctly used the point of order as I, as I was, uh, uh, I don't know what that is there. The item I removed from the agenda.
Your point of order was correct.
Amount of time, as I am allowed to do. This doesn't reflect that, but you want all this stuff to reflect it, but it always seems it only reflects your version and your opinions, and this happens a lot.
If you want something in there that was stated that you thought was important.
I don't want anything, Jason, and we had this discussion last time. Because you're bringing this up about.
Well, I should bring up the idea.
And then we want all this stuff, putting your stuff.
One person at a time speaks. One person at a time speaks.
And also, one person. Your job is to process fair while you've served the group. You help the group to make up its mind by serving as a facilitator, not the dictator. You are the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. Just like to state that again.
So.
Some confusion.
Yeah, you're pulling some, I, I guess I can find some other stuff in Roberts' rules of order that contradicts what you said.
I challenge you that, after you challenge me.
Absolutely. We'll do it three meetings.
Now, now, now I think.
So the floor, please. Under new business, where you were talking about, one of the things that's not in there that I thought was important to put in there is, I, I gave a suggestion. I gave an example of something, of how you want something handled in the future if a problem like that comes up. And I asked, and the question, the answer I got was, "Go by Roberts' rules of order."
And I, I still give you that advice.
Okay. And then I gave you the example again. Roberts' rules of order does not answer that question.
It does. It clearly does. You told us to study up on it.
Yeah.
Now that somebody did, and you're getting proven wrong, you don't like it.
The question I had for you was, if an item that some, that a commissioner wants to talk about is not on the agenda, should I disallow that? Right?
Under Roberts' rules, I'll do your homework for you. I'll do your homework for you.
Sure, thanks.
Under Roberts' rules, I believe it's up to the, to the council to decide if we want to speak about something that wasn't on the agenda. I, I remove that.
So then why wouldn't you say that?
I legally, because I don't, shouldn't have to do your homework. You're sitting up here telling us to go home and do our homework and to learn all this, and here you are sitting here, you're just running it, you're, you're freewheeling.
Sure. Okay, and the other part in here we have, and so the one, let me see where it is right now. Commissioner Utis noted, what he says, "He believes that the, the biggest difference between the two policies is the mayor's policy empowers the mayor in discipline matters in the department, and Utis keeps the power with the commissioner in charge." All right? So his opinion went in there, but when my opinion about that it doesn't follow state statute or ordinances, that's excluded. And I believe it.
Jason, here's, here's.
Hold on, I'm still talking. That it gives the sole power and authority to the, that it wasn't in there, right? And then it also got removed that the, that the attorney also rec, agreed with that as well, right? But that, we're going to exclude. But go ahead. What are you going to say?
My suggestion is, you either take over right in the minutes, or if, that Becky feels she can't do that, then I suggest we send her to a class or something, because this is not right. You know that it's not right, and you're, you're not going to keep getting, we're not doing this. You're not going to sit here and turn this into what Jason Curran said.
I think we can all agree that nobody should be walking into the clerk's office telling her what to put in her minutes.
It didn't.
She's more than capable than all of us of writing minutes, and if there's a problem, this is the time that it should be brought up, not before the fact, walking in there telling her what to do. Becky, Becky's wrote minutes for more meetings than any of us have been at, so in all fairness, i- it, this needs to be put to rest. We got business to handle here, and this is the kind of thing that serves this city no purpose whatsoever. We're just wasting time right now.
I think Commissioner McGovern, I want to speak.
Gentlemen, I would suggest that we let Becky write the minutes and carry on. We don't have any right going in there, telling her to change anything or whatever. We need to move on with this. We're wasting city's taxpayer money right now. We're not going to come to an agreement, it's apparent.
Commissioner Utis.
Yeah, any board I've ever sat on that follows Roberts' rules of order, the, the secretary, which would be the clerk in this situation, writes the minutes, and then at the next meeting, you approve those minutes with either any additions or corrections. And I think that is correct, that we shouldn't be marching into the clerk's office saying, "We want this, this, and this added." I think she should put it together. We should come to the next meeting, and then if we do see something that needs to be changed, then you, you approve it at a council level, because that way it's not unilateral. It's not one person making that change. All of us are voting to say, "Yes, that was left out," or "It wasn't left out," or "We think it should be in there, or it shouldn't be in there." And I think it's fair, Jason. That, that's my, my two cents.
Well, a couple of things I want to say that everybody keeps saying, that I marched in there and demanded something to be put on there, or I strong-armed the clerk. That is not true.
I never said that.
It was said once, but everybody keeps saying.
Maybe it wasn't this meeting, but when I went in there, I pointed out that I believe that there was things that were missing. For example, the city attorney made a recommendation that was not in there. If anything, that should be in there. That was the first thing. The other thing I talked about was the example that we had back and forth. Those were the two things that I had given her, that I said, "I recommend that those get in there." And she looked at them. She didn't even use my wording that I gave or anything like that. She put her own words into it, and then that's when the whole craziness ensued.
Okay, just like what you did just now? Maybe that's what we'll do moving forward. Go ahead and make it public, and then we can vote on it, agree or disagree.
Okay. Well, as I said, my recommendation was that those other legal opinions get added to the minutes, especially at a minimum, the city attorney's legal opinion.
Is the city's attorney's legal opinion in there now?
It is not.
Is the city attorney's legal opinion in every single set of minutes going back for the past year?
It should be, if it's not.
No, not should it be. My question was, is it? Not, this, this keeps going back to your opinion. Everything goes to your opinion.
You can make the same thing about the variance request tonight, right? If people have an argument because of something happened in the past, it's, it's about doing the right thing going forward. So the, the one that got scrubbed was this. Attorney Berry stated he didn't think any ordinances the council passed gave commissioners the sole authority to appoint or discharge employees, but further added, "I do think you should run this by your labor attorney."
And this will be discussed later on in this meeting, so we can either go round and round right now, or we can talk about that later on, because I'm pretty sure you're not going to like what we got from the labor attorney. And then we're back to square one, where either the council's going to figure it out, or we're just going to go round and round, and this is how these meetings are going to go.
You're right, I do look forward to that, because anything I have from the labor attorney, you already have. So if there's something new you have from the labor attorney, that'll be interesting.
Okay, well, I'm happy to provide it.
Excellent. All right, so what do we want to do? Do you want to approve the minute? If you want to approve the minutes as is, it's your motion to make. The, the item on the agenda is approved minutes from December 18, 2023. I made a recommendation, but ultimately, it's your motion to make.
This is for September 18?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second, or is there additions that somebody wants to make? For no second, it will.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second on the table for the minutes. Roll call, please.
No.
Utis?
Aye.
McDermott?
No.
Stefano?
No.
No. Okay, before we move on, is there something that somebody wants to make additions to the minutes? I mean, this is two meetings now that we've not approved the minutes from September 18.
I, I gave you my opinion. I think the comments and all that stuff needs to be taken out. It needs to reflect what the person's position was, and that's where you leave it at that. When we start getting into quotes, it's not, it, that's not what these minutes are there to do.
Okay, I heard your opinion. Does anybody have minutes, modifications they want to make? What direction do we want to give the city clerk to make modifications to, so something that we can approve eventually?
It's been stated numerous times. We'll go ahead and clean it up, and then we'll, we'll present it for the third time.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, moving on. Six, approved minutes from the September 5, 2023 executive session. Any discussion, concerns, or additions? If not, take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Utis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, approved minutes from the October 2, 2023 city council meeting. Same thing. October 2, minutes. Again, on October second, we had a very lengthy discussion on problems with the minutes from September eighteen. The version of these events omit any of the details of what the problem with the minutes were, but only offer several opinions. Things like Baldridge felt, Stephenelli's opinion was this, that he felt. Why they did indeed make these opinions a statement, which I have no problem being in the minutes, why did we exclude the discussion on that these items, uh, that are now removed were not opinions but factual things? When Baldridge challenged that there were opinions added, the mayor inquired, can you point out even one item that was added there in the last opinion? His statement was, the whole thing and all of it. Why is that opinion that is obviously completely incorrect not included, especially if the minutes are here to record somebody's objection to the minutes? So not only are the facts of the attorney's legal opinion still not corrected in the September eighteen minutes, they are still, aren't added here, as this was a discussion on that very information on October second. I recommend that all these relevant details be added to the minutes as well, because that indeed was the discussion was over, and it improves transparency.
I reluctantly did not call a point of order on you there, but I did tell you a little while ago that you're not to bias the crowd, you're not to read a, a prepared statement every single time there's something on this ordinance. I suggest you go and you, you read up on becoming a good facilitator of a meeting, because this is not how it's supposed to be conducted, but you keep doing that and.
When you have the floor, you're more than welcome to.
Well, we all have the floor before you, we all have it one time, and you, for some reason, need to counter every single time someone speaks. You always have to read out first thing, you have to give us your opinion to, to try and confuse people or make them think your way. It's just ridiculous.
Okay. So we're talking about the minutes. Anybody have any additions or corrections that they'd like to add to the minutes? In that case, take a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Abstain.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
No, motion passes. Number eight, approve minutes from the October second, twenty twenty-three executive session. Any questions, concerns, additions, or attractions? If not, take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yudis?
Abstain.
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number nine, approve bills as presented for payment in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight dollars and seven cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number ten, approve September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three payroll in the amount of eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve payroll in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and eight and forty-six.
Second. Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number eleven, ordinance number one-two-three-eight dash one-zero-one-six-two-three, which approves the termination of TIF one. We actually placed this on file last time. All this is, is the, basically, us, uh, we have a legal requirement to inform that the TIF is going to be ended and the account will be closed out December thirty-first. Um, any other questions, comments on that before we make a motion? Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance one-two-three-eight, one-zero-one-six-two-three.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number twelve, ordinance number one-two-three-nine dash one-zero-one-six-two-three, professional service agreement for the First Amendment to TIF District Six. So we talked about this a little bit. This also, as a reminder, this was, uh, we talked with Herb Klein when we had our final, uh, um, TIF meeting, this may be about a month ago. And one of the things we're looking at doing is the items that are the commercial districts of just TIF one, that they would be rolled into, I shouldn't say rolled into, that they're going to be included and amended into TIF six. So this basically just is the agreement that starts that process. It's, it's kind of a long process where they got to get all the legal descriptions and everything like that, so. Any questions, concerns over that? In that case, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number thirteen, resolution one-zero-zero-two-two-three, agreement with N C I C G for Strong Communities Grant Administration. Uh, we had this on the last, uh, meeting agenda, we did table it. Uh, Commissioner Stephanelli had a, had a good question in there, and at the time I couldn't give him a hundred percent, uh, accurate answer, but I believe the answer to the, to the other, what was it, the other agencies, what he was concerned about, that is what I was thinking. It is the, uh, anytime reports have to be made to special agencies, whether it's government or state or any agencies like that, that's what they're going to make the reports to. So, anybody have any other questions on that? Guess I'll take a motion to approve. This is also the grant that we got, that's for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. It helps us, uh, to remove some of the, the old dilapidated buildings that we have in the city.
I'll make a motion that we approve an agreement within C I C G on Strong Communities Grant Administration.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number fourteen, funding agreement for the Strong Communities Grant. I, I'm not sure if we need, really need this on here. I think what happened was, uh, they thought we might have already approved it at the last meeting, and they basically sent over the, the agreement that needs to be signed. So that's all it is, is we're waiting for it to be, uh, uh, for everybody to approve it, and then I can sign that. So, any questions, concerns on that? If I can get a motion.
So do we need to make a motion, or do we need to table?
I, if you want to make, well, we just approved it right before, so if you want to make a motion to approve, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the funding agreement for the Strong Communities Grant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number fifteen, memorandum of understanding with the F O P to increase police pay. Um, I, I didn't get a chance to talk with the rest of the commissioner about it. This is, if somebody wants to go into details, we could go into closed session for it, uh, but I think Commissioner Yudis and I talked, I, I don't know if we need to necessarily do that. Uh, the only thing that really, from the feedback we got from the labor attorney, was that we need to discuss what date we want to put on the agreement. Uh, did you want to take that?
Yeah, so, um, I did reach out to the union on this, and they wanted to use the, uh, ten-twenty-one of twenty-three, which is the start of a new pay period. My thought process is, is we, we could add that in there to the M O U and just basically say, that's when it's going to be effective. And it can even be retroactive, like you do with contract language, let's say we don't get everything signed until November first. You could still have it retroactive to ten-twenty-one, much like you do contracts that go past their, their expiration date.
In, in all fairness, though, which I, I don't have a real issue with that, I mean, I'd prefer not to do back pay for, for these kinds of things. Um, the labor attorney actually came back with, he had a recommendation to December first. The reason for that was, he said he wanted to have a date that was future enough, that you would get it signed. And I, my counter that I talked to Commissioner Yudis about was, I don't even know, necessarily needs to be December first. My recommendation would be the first pay period after our first meeting in November would be my recommendation. So that way we don't have to mess with any back pay type issues or anything like that.
I don't know that we're really going to be messing with any back pay issues, because that pay period runs through November anyway, Jason, so it just starts on the twenty-first. That's not when the actual pay date is. The pay period starts on the twenty-first, so the time that ends, it's going to be November what? Got to keep grabbing. I, well, it's, but it's going to be, you know, a couple of weeks after that, that twenty-first date. That's just the start of it, so that way it just makes it easier for our, um, clerk staff to have a timeframe to, to start. Instead of having to figure out mid-pay cycle when you have a change in pay, I think it's just going to jam them up. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, I think the other thing we talked about was, as long as the date is, is not, or, but, 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 I can't remember what you said exactly. The date was not earlier than, than the, the last person who signs it was, or something like that?
Right. I mean, usually memoris, memos of understanding are based upon the date that they're signed. I mean, they can have a different effective date spelled out on them, it doesn't sound like this one does.
It does, no, Terry, they, they.
I haven't seen it, so I can't really.
No, that, that, that was a labor attorney's recommendation, Pat, was to, that, that's one thing that was left off, and he, that was his recommendation, was to attach a date to it, that way you know when the effective date is to have it enacted, and I think it's in our best interest.
I can't imagine it couldn't be signed by Friday.
To be signed, it could be signed tomorrow, I guarantee it. As long as Jason's not going on vacation or something.
Well, at some point, but.
The twenty-first is Saturday, actually, so as long as it's signed by the end of the business week, you know, I would.
I, I know I can get the union in here to sign without any issue whatsoever.
Well, as long as we don't think it's going to cause a, I just didn't want to, I, I figured there's no reason for us to bend over backwards to cause a back pay situation if we're the ones that's, the ones offering.
No, I don't think we, I don't think we will be doing that, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
If you don't think any issue with that, then I, I'm okay with that too.
I don't, but if you're going to make a motion, Terry, make it effective, ten-twenty-one, twenty-three, okay?
Because I don't think he had any other recommendations to changes or any problems with the.
That was it.
Okay. Anybody, anybody other questions or concerns about that? If you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the M O U with the F O P and make it effective as of ten-twenty-one of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number sixteen, I V C C request for annexation. So this is not a pre-annexation agreement or anything yet. We did get a, um, a letter in that was, uh, from Chamblin's and Associates, who was, uh, represented all the, uh, some of the, look at the zoning, and, uh, and there's a special use permit and all this. This is for the, um, the ag building that they're looking to do here. So really, the only thing we're looking to do right now is just make a recommendation to send this to the planning commission. There is still a little bit of work that has to get done, obviously, with it. There's, there's obviously some, uh, details that be worked out. For example, in the letter I got from Chamblin's, it said something about water and sewer, but didn't make a mention of anything with electric. But again, that's not a, a pre-annexation agreement yet, so we've got to work out those details yet, but, um, unless anybody has any questions or concerns, I could talk about it now, I'd like to get it over to the planning commission so we can get things moving.
In the future, when these discussions do take place, are the, uh, two respective commissioners of the utilities going to be involved in that discussion?
So, I would say yes, because the last conversation that we've actually had with them, and that was actually before the previous, uh, president, and since I was the utility commissioner for both of those, I did have that conversation. I was there with the mayor, uh, when we had those conversations, but again, I have not sat down with, uh, Dr. Morris directly about this. The last one I had a conversation was with Dr. Corcoran.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that the appropriate commissioner be involved in the conversation, so that this way there's no miscommunication or misunderstanding or difference of opinion or anything like that.
To my knowledge, I don't believe there has been a new conversation with the college before this request came in, since the last time.
Okay. Like to make a motion to send the I V C C request for annexation to the planning committee.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number seventeen, uh, plan commission recommendation in regards to the.
Matil.
Matil variance request. I believe that happened earlier, and I believe everybody has their thing in front of them. Uh, the zoning board did, made a motion to allow a zero-foot setback as requested, and I believe the motion carried. Uh, any questions, concerns, or discussions over this?
Like to make a motion to, uh, what do you, uh, grant the variance request for the Matil property.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number eighteen, plan commission recommendation in regards to the Duncan variance request. So that's kind of the reason why we were delayed in starting, uh, our meeting here. It did run long. Uh, my understanding from what I have here is, um, that they had a request for more information per, pending further discussion, and that's, so basically they made a motion to table it. Uh, anybody like to talk or discuss anything about this?
Sure. Um, so my name was mentioned several times, and I'd just like to give my perspective of what happened. At the end of the day, it's going to be between the attorney and the, the residence attorney, because in our last meeting, um, with the residents, uh, they had said that they wanted to get their attorney involved, so at that point, that's where the attorneys get involved. As far as, uh, as far as my involvement in it, um, it wasn't Mr. Stephanelli's requirements, it's the requirements of the land development code. This is what the rules are in the book that we have, the rules that have made, been made before us, and, and that's what they are. I, I can't apply them to one person and bend them for another. It is what it is. Uh, I tried to expedite the process by coming in and looking over what was submitted. At first, there was only two pieces of paper submitted. We had to go round and round to get drawings. That was a little bit of a challenge. But again, our, our intention in the clerk's office, and my intention, was to expedite this and try and keep them moving along. Uh, as far as the site plan and everything else goes, again, I had seen something that said thirty feet. Now, whether it was thirty feet from the curb or thirty feet from the property line was unclear at the time, because it was moving so fast. If that's my mistake, I willingly own it, I accept it, and I admit it, and that happens. None of us are perfect, and that starts with me. As far as discussions of a variance and everything else, this was far after, uh, the hole had been dug and everything else had been put into place. The city's fault was that the permit was issued prematurely, um, and, and I could say that. I could say that honestly, that it was issued prematurely. I think if we had, uh, pressed for a lot more of this stuff, we would probably be on the same wavelength. The city went the extra mile to try and remedy the problem, where we brought in an independent engineer, not our own city engineer, but an independent, so that we had an unbiased opinion. Then we brought in a contractor to make a bid on what the city engi, or what the, uh, independent engineer had proposed to resolve the problem with where the garage would be located. And we had yet to receive a response, because they, they wanted the variance instead. That's where we're at with it, that's the city's part. I, I feel bad, I, I, this, for me, it's, it's not a personal thing. I have no ill will. I think they're very nice people. They live on the next street over from me. But unfortunately, this is the unfortunate part of the job that we do, is that you have to apply the rules, and, and you can't just apply them one place and not the other. So on the city's behalf, that's, that's my, uh, that's my statement of it, and at this point, it's going to, it's going to lie with the attorneys.
Okay. Um, so yeah, there was a couple of things I heard during some of the opening comments here. I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, so there is some information I'd like to hear, because there's some stuff I didn't, I've never heard before. City got an anonymous estimate, something about one-third of the cost. I don't know anything about an anonymous estimate. Um, and then moving back reduces privacy. I'm not, I'm not sure what some of those things mean. I'd like to get a little more information on that, uh, as well. But from my understanding of the situation was, I guess there was some mistakes that were made. Uh, the city did, as Commissioner Stephanelli said, we, we brought an engineer in, an independent engineer, to take a look to see if there was any problem with the land at that point. And from my understanding of what came back to me was that this problem, it's not to the point to where it can't be rectified by some kind of engineering fix, right? And that fix was that the backfill can be put in, uh, it can be stamped down, it can be recertified, and that's not, it's not a problem for construction. If it was, then that's a whole other issue. And my understanding was the city made an offer to, to pay what that engineering cost was. I, I know that there's still some debate about they thought that wasn't fair or not, though, but to me, there is a little bit of a legal dispute there. Um, my, my thing that I'm excited to hear is that the problem is not impossible to solve. Whether it costs some money or something like that, the, 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 the house can be built to code, to specifications, and there's no safety concern that I know about. So, um, anybody else have any comments on that that they'd like to add?
No, there were, there, that was put on the table, and like I said, this, this lies with the attorneys now, and they can work it out. The city, on their part, has, has offered goodwill and tried to make it right, and depending on where, you know, where we're going to be happy with it, you know, on the resident's side and on the city's side, that's, that's for the attorneys to work out at this point, so.
Well, I would like to resolve this for them, but I, I think the problem, we talked a little bit about this, is we have a, we have a formal board that did some stuff. They didn't give us a denial recommendation or an approval recommendation. They, they did a, a table.
They're looking for more information.
So, I, my recommendation is if they tabled it because they believe they need more information out there, uh, we should probably do the same thing, and then try, try to help them out to make sure, hopefully they got all the questions that they asked.
I'll, I'll move the, I'll move the table.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number nineteen, place on file building permits for the third quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, any questions, concerns, or can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye. Number twenty, send ordinance one-two-one-four-dash-zero-three-two-zero-two-three relating to letters of occupancy to the planning commission for revisions. Do you want to talk about this?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, it's something that, uh, was approved in March of this year. I found, uh, I found a, a technicality error in there, and I think, uh, it should go back to the planning commission so that they can review it and send it back so that, uh, it can reflect better in our, our land development code.
Yep. If I remember right, that was one of the items that we, we tried to see if we can resolve some problems going forward. I think that might even be regards to, uh.
Sidewalks and everything else, so.
And they saw an issue with it, that, that could still be a loophole, and we're trying to basically close loopholes to make better building permits for everybody, so I think it's a great thing. Any other questions, concerns on that? If I can get him to make a motion to send that back.
I'll make a motion to send to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Aldrich?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephon Ali?
Aye.
Aye.
Is somebody going to fill me in on what the issues are, because we have to publish a notice in the paper about what changes are being suggested, so.
Uh, it's.
I'll read detail.
Uh, I can, I can get with you after the meeting, but it's basically kind of like the way that it's worded and the timeframes would have to correspond differently.
Any idea how many items that they wanted to get more, is it one, two, is it three or four? How many items did they want to get more than anything? For the, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Wrong thing.
You're talking to a different subject. I'm on the next, I'm on the previous subject, my bad. I apologize. All right.
Uh, I, Pat, I can give you everything after the meeting. I can kind of.
If you want to just summarize it, Tony.
That's fine.
Tony, man, you can do that at your leisure.
You bet.
All right. Number twenty-one, discuss labor attorney feedback on updated personnel policy. I'm not sure what other people have, but I'll, I'll read what I have first, so. So what I'll do here is read several excerpts, uh, and correspondence pieces that we had between various council members and the labor attorney on this. Then I'll open up the discussion that the council might want to offer any additional comments, or if they have other pieces of information that I'm unaware of, on whatever following recommendations we want to do with it. Because we can all agree that we need this updated, and I would say, um, as, we all concur about ninety-five percent of its, uh, language. It's that last five percent we're in disagreement. This is the draft policy to resolve a host of items that we've been working on for a while. We had two of them put up at the September eighteenth council meeting, one for myself and one for Commissioner Yudis. Both were voted on to send to the labor attorney for review, but Commissioner Yudis' version was the one with a three-to-two vote that we're going to forward to the labor attorney for review. After the vote concluded, I made a statement the next day, I would forward for review the agreed-upon policy. However, the next morning at seven oh five A M, Commissioner Yudis sent the personnel policy to the labor attorney. In his email, he misstated to the labor attorney a few things. The first line was, quote, "At last evening's council meeting, the attached personnel policy was approved by the qu, council," end quote. This is not accurate. We did not approve it. We voted to send it to the labor attorney for a legal review. Also, later down in the email, Commissioner Yudis's communication with the labor attorney stated. Also, later down in the email, Commissioner Yudis's communication with the labor attorney stated, quote, "This is the policy that was approved by vote last evening, and please disregard any official or person that may want to offer any comment to you," end quote. While I can't say for certain why he communicated that line, perhaps he'll decide to speak to it once I open the topic for discussion. My assumption is he sent the email and the request to not speak to anyone else because he didn't want the labor attorney to know the part of our discussion at the meeting.
Point of order.
Point of order. Absolutely.
What's your point of order?
You're, you're not going to trash another commissioner up here like that.
And that's what you're doing, Jason.
And that's what you're doing. You're throwing somebody right under the bus. If you're going to be constructive, lay your case on the merits. Don't start throwing people under the bus up here.
I'm reading the facts.
There are always the facts when you state them. Always. Every time.
It's a direct
Whoa, they're, they're
You want to make the email public?
You're sitting here saying that he did this on purpose, and he's telling this guy not to do it.
Yeah, how about all your opinions?
I had malice, Jason. I never had malice.
One at a time.
I request the floor. I request the floor.
I don't know.
When we had, when we had the attorney change, did you offer any opinions in, in letters that you wrote to them?
You made a point of order. What's your point of order?
My point of order is that you're not going to disparage any commissioner up here. That's not your role as the chair, and you need to learn the role. You're not going to disparage
I'm reading the facts.
The facts is The facts is written on your paper?
I have a commissioner that stated something that wasn't true, and then they
Okay, okay, go, go ahead, and we'll finish this. Now, now, we're, now, we're, now, we're going to
As I say, I'll repeat the line
We're going to make the council look bad for no apparent reason.
I'll repeat the line again. This is the policy that was approved by vote last evening, and please disregard any official or person that may want to offer any comment to you.
Now, is the next sentence fact?
I, I said, "While I can't say for certain why you committed this."
Is that a fact? Because you just said you're only reading off facts. Is that a fact? That next statement, is that a fact?
I said, "My assumption is," you have the right to challenge that if you want.
I am challenging.
This, this is not your turn to speak.
Well, I love how you use these
I'd like to
We're going to recognize people here at some point.
I will.
You're monopolizing the floor right now.
You'll have your opportunity to speak.
What about that letter you sent to the attorney that you never told any of us about when we asked you to strike that second line? Do you want to talk about that, Jason?
What second line?
You're going to put that out on the table here?
What second line? What are you talking about?
You, we asked you, you, you sent us all a letter about the attorney when we changed the language that we were that the council will control the attorneys and not you.
Offering your opinion in the very last part of it.
And we asked you to strike that whole second paragraph on that letter that went to the attorney. You did not. You lied to all of us. You lied to all of us.
I didn't lie to anything.
Yes, you did. You absolutely did.
Just telling the truth.
You told us you were taking it off.
Bring that information back. There's nothing I have ever lied about.
No, you were told to strike that second paragraph if you're, if you're writing on the city's behalf.
I do remember that. I do remember that. You told me to strike something. I'm like, it's my signature. I don't have to strike anything.
Okay, then you know what? Then we're going to write our own letters from now on.
You can do that if that's what you feel.
Two commissioners is just as good as a mayor's signature.
That's what you think. Okay.
Okay.
So, moving on. A few hours later, Commissioner Yudis sent the initial email. I followed up with the labor attorney with this. "Good morning, Carl. Commissioner Yudis's email is only partially accurate. The policy was not approved by vote last night as there were several questions raised on its legality in regards to labor law, collective bargaining, state statutes, and our local ordinances. When those questions were raised, several members of the council literally said that we conferred to the labor attorney for the legal opinion. So, there was a split vote, three-to-two, to forward the policy to the labor attorney for their recommendation. It was not to be approved outright. That's not what the motion was nor the vote. Further, I don't know where Commissioner Yudis feels he has the right to offer his comments, but then to request that any other official's comments should be disregarded. Thanks in advance, and I look forward to your legal assessment on this when it's available," end quote. Mr. Odison then replied to me a few hours later, presumably, presumably after a quick initial review. "Thank you, Mayor Kern. I was wondering how this was approved and then sent for review. Briefly, the city can adopt the maternity leave policy, but it will not apply to, to union members unless agreed to in negotiations. Regardless, the policy, if adopted, should state it is for non-union employees until negotiated otherwise. I agree on the discipline issue and prefer not to have policies which say something which is not in line with the statutory authority. I'll get this turned around quickly with the paid leave issues addressed as well," end quote. On September twenty-eighth, he sent the council back his updated version of the policy with the added items and his legal opinion on the policy. I'll summarize some of the sections for brevity, but I'll give a verbatim for those items that were contentious between the council. Changes as follows: Modified some harassment language, modified cannabis, drugs, alcohol, and CDL licenses to be in line with Illinois. Added the paid leave section that will be effective January twenty twenty-four for part-timers. Added a bereavement leave provision. Added additional reviews for police officers because they no longer, they have a longer probation period. And this one, verbatim, quote, "On pages twenty-two to twenty-three, there are highlighted parts with comments addressing the authority to discipline. As stated in a comment, the city code and Illinois municipal code interpretation is an issue best addressed by the city attorney. I believe state law and the city code conflict with the disciplinary policy as drafted and recommend this issue be resolved before adopting the policy," end quote. The city attorney stated back on September eighteenth that he didn't believe our ordinances gave commissioners the sole authority to appoint or discharge employees. And now the labor attorney also said it isn't consistent with state statute either. While I've only talked to one commissioner on this topic, they still don't agree with it. I'm not sure what legal expert I need to put in front of them that will explain to them that you can't do something that they'll actually adhere to, but when the discussion opens up, perhaps they can tell us. Also, in this email that came back to us, I did not see anything about the maternity leave portion, even though I did see it on the initial email reply sent almost two weeks earlier. So, I inquired. Here's what I got back. Mayor, quote, "Mayor Kern, as to the maternity leave, you are correct regarding its applicability to employees covered by union contracts. Absent agreement by the union, their members are not eligible for new benefits. The city should provide both unions with the revised personnel policies and may request to bargain some of the issues which impact their units. The discipline procedures in particular will likely be something they wish to negotiate. You should advise them that any new benefit such as maternity leave is not applicable to their members until there is an agreement between the city and the union providing it to the bargaining unit. That can be midterm MOU or discussed at the next time the contract is up," end quote. These replies and legal analysis were provided to the entire council on September twenty-ninth in full as well. So, here we are. We have a vast majority of this documented, updated, legal, and ready to go. The two items I pointed out that I stated were not legal and, in my opinion, a terrible idea anyway, have come back from the labor attorney as something that is not consistent with state statute and law. My recommendation is this, to keep the areas of this document of Commissioner Yudis's version that were updated by the labor attorney, but the sections in which the labor attorney stated were in conflict with statute, I recommend we send the other drafted version to the labor attorney to review to become compliant with the state statute. At the same time, we review our surrounding community's various maternity policies, similar to how we reviewed the various pay structures to our surrounding police departments, and then we look to adopt something we think fits our community the best. For example, I really like what the city of LaSalle has for its maternity leave policy, but I'm not familiar enough with the other cities and what they have. A solid review of this could offer us a good product to discuss with the union. Once the unions review the policy like the labor attorney suggested, we will be ready to request to bargain some of those items, go with a side letter of agreement, or wait until the next bargaining contract. At this time, I'll open it up for the council for discussion, comments, feedback, and a potential recommendation going forward. Who would like to foreflourish?
How, how far you want to go with this?
Well, if you have other information from the labor attorney, I'd love to hear it because it wasn't shared with me.
Well, I got this three days ago, and, uh, this was, this was because it wasn't shared with you because of the actions that you took that what you just, that this whole fiasco that we just had, that's why it wasn't shared with you. Now, now, we're going to, we're going to play the same game here. So, I'm going to tell you what I had sent to the labor attorney after all this came back. So, I had asked him about the commission form of government, and I went on, and I started citing different areas of the state statute of our municipal code, and I sent it to him, and he came back, and he had said this. "Tony, here is the most applicable direct statutory authority. Unless the city has adopted the Civil Service Commission for hiring, promotion, discipline, and discharge of employees, the respective commissioners have authority over their department's employees, which if we're going to dispense with the elephant in the room, that's what this all comes down to is, is it the commissioner who's going to have that complete oversight, or is it going to be the commissioner in consultation with the mayor? So, if we're going to call it for what it is, that's what it is." And he goes on, and he gives me this section from the state statute saying, "In all municipalities in which sections ten-point-one-point-one through ten-point-one-point-four-five are not in effect," and that's Civil Service Commission, just so for everybody's knowledge here, "all officers, assistants, and employees of each department specified in section four-five-two," which is basically the departments, "except those elected or appointed." Now, for clarification, that's going to be the city clerk, it's going to be the police chief, fire chief, those are the people that are elected or appointed, "shall be appointed by the commissioner of the department to which they are appointed and may be discharged by him when, in his judgment, the efficient, efficient conduct of municipal affairs so demands." And then it go, and then it goes on to talk about the civil service part of it. He says, "I recommend this be reviewed by the city's attorney and see if he still believes there's no authority to discipline by the commissioners." You can have that.
Okay.
Now, what I want to say is this. We've heard over and over again at the Illinois Municipal League Conference, we've heard from our own attorney earlier on in life here, that you guys need to work it out, referring to us as the council, because you're not going to find one attorney that's going to talk against another attorney. What you will find is if you want to go basically burn taxpayer money, you can hire an attorney on the mayor's behalf. The commissioners can hire an attorney on the commissioner's behalf. It's a poor use of taxpayer funds because then you're putting it in front of a judge. So, what I'm saying is, with all this stuff about who has oversight and this distribution of authority, either we're going to figure it out amongst ourselves, or this is just going to be more of the same. And I say we get past this. In my opinion, and I think everybody else's opinion, the way they reflect it, is that the commissioner wants oversight of their department and their employees. And, and the problem that we've had in the past is where somebody would say, "You know what? I don't like what you think. I'm going to the mayor." And then that undermines a person's authority. So, as far as I'm concerned, if the commissioner is given these responsibilities by state statute, because this is the only form of government where they start spelling out exactly what you're responsible for, then guess what? That's our responsibility, and we're the ones who have to oversee it. As, as far as the mayoral role goes, again, I've said this before, you are not the executive. This whole body is the executive and the legislative function of government. We're in an aldermanic form of government. The mayor would be the executive, the alderman would be the legislative function.
Okay.
And, and again, I'm not going to put Pat Berry on the spot and say, "Well, Pat, you know what? You need to, you, you need to make a decision between Jason and the commissioners. That's not fair to him. But we need to figure this out," and what I'm saying is, I'm done going round and round like this because we need to focus on the residents, the finances of this city, and the things that we need to get accomplished instead of having this go around all the time.
So, so I don't have to go back and listen to them? Can, I, I didn't quite understand. What did, what did you say the reason was? You got this information from the labor attorney and decided to willfully exclude it from me?
Didn't willfully exclude it, and you just got it presented to you. Again, now, we can go back, Jason, and you can play this game because now we're just throwing each other under the bus. When you wrote, when you wrote a letter to the attorneys after we had changed that the council has control over the attorney and supervision, you offered your opinion on the bottom of it.
I did.
And, and we all told you, "Now, that's not necessary. Just tell them that this was changed last night. Here is the applicable number. Let them make their own."
Did I tell you that I, I'm going to remove that section? I never did.
Well, if you're not going to
You told me to do that. I'm like, you don't tell me what to do.
You misled us, and you speak on behalf of this council, not just yourself.
I didn't misled anything.
You absolutely did.
You, we'll agree to disagree on that, but when you write those letters, you speak on behalf of this council, not just yourself as the mayor. And if you have, if you have a majority of council people telling you, "Listen, that second paragraph isn't necessary. Let these lawyers do their own job and figure it out for themselves," and you just go ahead and do it, that's a slap in the face to everybody that's sitting up here.
Yep. I'll make that, I'll make that letter public, and we'll, we could, we could see what, what people what people think the value of that, that next line was. I know you don't want that
Well, I know you like to hear yourself talk.
You know what, Jason? It's not that, it's not that somebody wants to silence you. The problem is, is that your mouth gets you in trouble a lot of the time. And when you speak on behalf of this council and you just go and say things, that's the problem. So, nobody's trying to silence you. Those of us up here that actually really care, we represent the city of Oglesby. Even the people that come to this podium represent the city of Oglesby. That's a fact. No, I, I still have the floor. I'm still talking. We want the best for this city, and the way that we portray ourselves, and this is not an accurate representation, this is not what we should be doing, is not in the best interest of the city of Oglesby, whether it's in written form, whether it's what we're doing up here, and whether it's us as the elected people, whether it's the person that goes to that podium, all of us have an obligation to make this city look good because it's our city.
Okay. You bury a lot of things you say, and, and a lot of, you say, you, you say something, and then you bury it in twenty, in twenty statements that are obviously very true. The fact of the matter is, I have three people on this council that want the sole authority to be able to terminate employees at will, and the state, the, the state statute, from my understanding, what I, everybody has told me, you are not allowed to do that. I've got that from our city attorney. I got that from the labor attorney. I got it from the IML. And now you're telling me that something came in three days ago that, that you got some information.
I inquired about what he had sent back to Commissioner Yudis saying that there was a problem or, or that there was a conflict with the Illinois statute. So, I questioned him on every single part of it, and that's what his response was.
Okay.
Are you implying that he has a false paper there?
I, I don't know what it is.
No, I gave it to him. I gave him the email.
Oh, I, I have the email, so I'm supposed to absorb what this is in three seconds, I suppose.
Well, you don't have to.
Everything, everything that I gave you for the quotes.
It just goes to show you that you, there's a conflict, and no attorney is going to talk against another attorney, and no attorney is going to take the side of a mayor or a commissioner. They're going to say, "You guys got to work it out."
Okay.
So, either we work it out, or we just have more of this.
The point is, the quotes I gave, you all have. You have those quotes, and now you're, you know, I hate, I, to me, it's not fair to even ask the city attorney, "What do you make of this?" Because, I mean, you just saw it in three seconds, too.
Well, I
Well, the state statute wasn't just changed last night.
Gentlemen.
Then my, hold on. Then my question would be, what about that statute that said specifically, I think it's even listed bef, I'm not, I have to look at what section it's in. Before there, it says, "If they want that authority, they have to have an ordinance that gives them that specific authority." And my understanding is the specific overrules the general.
I would like to clarify.
And I would agree with that, but I want to read them all and digest them together.
All right.
Can I, can I, can I tell you where that appears? Yeah. Section two-point-zero-three-point-zero-eight-zero, Appointment of Assistants and Employees. And if you, if you go past the, all the, the formality, it says, "The commissioner of each department stated in this chapter shall be vested with the right, power, and authority to appoint all heads of departments, officers, and employees subordinate to his department under his charge, control, and supervision, unless otherwise provided by law or ordinance. Provided however that the city engineer," and that goes on to say that the city engineer is the mayor's unless he's working in a certain department. If he's doing street work or something like that, then he answers to Commissioner McDermott. So, that's what it says in here, and that's our own municipal code, and a lot of this stuff is copied right from the state statute if you actually break it down and look at it. For the record, nobody's looking to fire anybody. This is a question of who is going to have the oversight or the final call on it without having to be second-guessed or undermined because I don't like what the commissioner told me, so guess what? I'm going to go to the mayor, and then the mayor's going to do something different. That's, that's the question that's on the table.
So, that's not correct. Again, you're putting
Okay, in your opinion, it's not correct.
It's not. And this is, this is why the minutes were so important, because in somebody's opinion, they put out, it empowers the mayor. But in my version, what did it say? It said, "If the, if the commissioner and the mayor don't concur, what happens? It goes to the council." So, the mayor does not supersede. So, what you said is not accurate.
Okay. All right. In your opinion, it's not accurate.
Okay.
I just read you the language.
Yep. Okay, so then the question here is, what do we do? We got, uh, we, we got something from the labor attorney that what I have read and, and deciphered was, you can't do it. You can't do the thing in there that you want to just give the union a bunch of, uh, maternity leave. It has to be negotiated with them first. Do you, do you, are you arguing that aspect of it?
I would say that you'd have to address that with the, the Commissioner of Public Safety. I don't disagree with it, and I'm going to support whatever he comes up with because we need to take care of our people.
There's more than just the, the FOP. We have other unions in the city as well, so it's not just one commissioner on that. So, that part was one thing that we can't do, and now you're coming up with something at the last minute on the fly from the
No, there's nothing on the fly about it. I asked, I, when I provided him everything from my perspective, as I just, as I just stated it, as I saw it, he said, "You know what? Actually, technically, you're right. The commissioner does have that authority." So, and now I just read it to you where it appeared in the municipal code. So, we can either argue about whether the commissioner does or they don't, or we can go round and round in circles. Which one is it? Lay the merit on the table. Let's argue the merit. Otherwise, if not, we're done.
If you got this three days ago, why did you not share that either with me, the rest of the council, or our city attorney?
Because it was going to come up this evening. Why did you not?
So, you're going to bring it up this evening?
Why did, why did you, why did you send letters even after we, speaking on the council's behalf, even after we told you that the second paragraph should be omitted if you're speaking on behalf of the council?
I'm not speaking on behalf of yours.
Okay.
As a mayor, you are.
As a mayor, you are.
Absolutely are.
I, I
Absolutely are.
I was not speaking on your behalf.
You're speaking on behalf of the Oglesby.
I get it.
Why did you send us a letter then to look over, Jason?
I wanted to make sure you didn't have any problem with the first part of the
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, I see.
I, I stated
You just want us to look at the first paragraph, not the second.
You can look whatever you want. I gave the legal
And we did, and we said that it's unfair, and it's inappropriate for you to be offering your legal opinion to an attorney.
You do not have authority to, to tell me what to do outside of these council meetings.
You don't have the authority to take taxpayers' money and play games like this either.
What kind of games are you talking about?
Throwing in your opinion of what the legal reference is there. You shouldn't be doing it.
My legal opinion was right.
Your legal opinion is not right, Jason. That's still your opinion.
Okay.
I'm going to move to closed discussion.
So, what are you going to do then?
Just a minute.
So what are you gonna do, then?
Move to closed discussion.
Okay, so we close the discussion, you didn't have to vote on it.
Did you have something, Mac?
Well, I was gonna suggest, I mean, it's obvious we're gonna agree to disagree. Let's let Berry take a look at this. Let's table it until the next meeting, okay? Let's get it all worked out, get everything in order.
I don't think it's fair to put him on the spot like that.
The last official thing I have from...
Yeah.
I can't tell you that...
He is our attorney.
The last official thing I have from...
I don't want you in the middle, Pat. I don't think it's fair to you.
Well, he'll just look at the legal side.
Can we, one at a time? The last official thing I have, the last official thing I have from the labor attorney is that the problem needs to be resolved with the city attorney first, is what I hear. That's what I have. If you have something different that's been shared today, I don't see anything that counters that here.
No, it says the same thing right at the bottom of it. But again, I don't think it's fair to stick Pat in the middle of it, because Pat, now you're gonna have to decide between the mayor and the commissioners, and that's not reasonable.
I'm not gonna decide between the mayor and the commissioners, Tony. I'm gonna look at the law and give you my recommendations.
Absolutely, right there it is. He looks at the law, that's it.
And wherever the chips fall, they fall.
Are we looking to table this one more time, then, to give the opportunity for him to review this?
I vote that, I'll make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, so Berry can look it over.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Albridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Aye.
And just so I'm clear, am I looking at the issue regarding hiring and firing of employees in departments by commissioners? Is that what my legal advice is?
Yes, but not the appointed and elected officials. I believe what the problem here is, is that the fire and police chief are different, and that's where...
And the clerk as well. That would have to be, if you were gonna change anybody...
But that's my opinion, Ben.
No, I think you're right about that, Rich.
If you're gonna change an appointed person, that has to be a council vote. If we're talking about employees and subordinates within the department, that goes to the commissioner.
Management slash union is separate.
What do you have here? Should be appointed, the commission departments are appointed, and they discharge by hand of the judge. Yeah, I guess the thing is, is whatever this new piece of evidence is here...
It's in the state statute, Jason. If you've gone through the state statute...
I have.
There's the section of it, and I've pointed it out before.
What about the thing I pointed out, that was specific?
Yeah, that by ordinance, okay. And I just read you our municipal code, which has come from an ordinance, that says the same exact thing. It's basically copy and pasted language.
So what we are recommending to the attorney is for them to review that piece of information and whatever the other previous information is?
Pat, was there something unclear?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, next up, 22, old business. Recommend modifications to section 2.03.120, member rules of the municipal code. So if you take a look here, Commissioner Steph Nellie brought this up at the last meeting, and I thought he had a lot of really good points. If you look at the original one, this is what the original one is, that has some stuff in here, it just has the order of business. I thought it would be worthwhile to talk about, what if we wanna send this to get actually modified to what our actual order of business is? If you take a look at what I put in there, I put in the Pledge of Allegiance, I put in the resolutions ordinances, old business, new business, commissioner reports, mayor report. Basically, it follows how we've been doing it for the last how many years. I think there's some value there, because you did make a good example. In the old, original one from 1927, or whatever it is, it has the words unfinished business and new business in there. Unless we wanna start going to that, I like, I think that we should just make the changes to it. What do you think? Thoughts? Is everybody still riled up from the previous item?
I just, I think it has to, you know, it has to be...
Consistent.
Consistent. It has to be consistent. It should mirror whatever, if we're following Robert's rules, whatever, if it's unfinished business, it's unfinished business. It just... And I don't like the idea of playing games with the agenda. I spoke to that last meeting, I'm not gonna go on anymore, because I'm tired of hearing myself at this point. You know, this should be fairly easy. If somebody wants to talk about something, they put it on there. If they don't have all the information they need before the 48 hours, they're more than welcome to pull it off, unless the majority of the group decides that it's something that they're passionate and need to talk about. So as far as this, I'm indifferent about it.
Yeah, I don't think that's any of the stuff that's addressed here. That's all addressed some police house that we've already talked. This is just the, basically, the order of business for everything. I just thought what you brought up had value, because there's a lot of things on here that, for example, if you go by the current one we have, it says reports are the third item we have. Well, obviously, reports is what we do at the end of the meeting. So I thought I'd reflect it to what we actually do. Thoughts on that? You wanna keep it the same, even though we don't follow that order? Or do you wanna modify it to something different?
I think you're probably best served having a one-on-one with each commissioner and talking about it with them, and then this should be a very easy thing in our next meeting.
I did talk to you one-on-one about that.
Well, you talked to me, but there's three other elected guys here.
Do you have an opinion?
Do I have an opinion? I just told you I was indifferent about it.
Okay.
What was unclear about that?
Anybody else have any opinion?
My opinion is that we table this recommendation.
Okay. All right.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Albridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on our old business, discuss departmental budgets and placing spending caps.
Okay, so this was something that we had talked about last meeting, as far as budgets versus the appropriations. We have all these projects coming up, there's gonna be expenditure, we have to be wise with the wallet. The spending caps we had talked about, Terry, you had said $2,500 was a pretty reasonable number. I had started at $1,000, you said $2,500, so I'm...
Well, I can't even buy a set of bunker gear for $1,000, so if somebody new come on, I can't even outfit them.
Yep, no, that makes sense. I wasn't looking at it from that perspective, but now I agree with that, and I think it makes a lot of sense. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to implement a purchase order program here, or policy, where anything above $2,500 would require a signature by the commissioner of that department. So at least this way, there's some sort of a control mechanism in place, or some oversight, so that money doesn't get spent unnecessarily, or money that could base, or stuff could be put off, that there's a control mechanism in place. I think it's responsible, and I think it actually makes us more accountable to it as well. Instead of getting the bill and saying, all right, well, now we already spent it, and I just gotta sign for it before the fact, we could at least have a discussion and say, well, do we need this right away, or is this something that we can put off for a couple weeks, and then come back to it, so that we're responsible with the budget and with the purse?
Are you looking at bringing it up to committee here, like, for $700, or just certain departments?
No, Mac, what it would be is, if Dan had come to you and said, hey, listen, you know, I need to buy this piece of equipment, but it's gonna cost $3,000...
Or like, fix the tractor, it costs over $14,000.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that you'd, you know, you'd have to sign off on it before that purchase, or before the cost is even incurred.
Well, I don't, I can't speak for other departments. I do know my departments, they let me know ahead of the time. And like I just said, we spend quite a bit of money to repair a tractor, and we act, we need it.
Yep. And all I'm saying is, it's, all we're doing is making a formal process now, that no matter whose department it is, if you got a big expense like that, the commissioner signs off on it before the credit card's handed over. I just think it's a good, responsible thing to do, and I'm not suggesting that anybody's being irresponsible, but I do think that it at least puts a track in place, so that we're being responsible with taxpayer money. That's all.
You're asking the commissioner to oversee the bills.
Let me ask you this, how do you want to enforce this? Because we already have, we have a couple policies in place. We have a spending policy, for example. Right now, obviously, the commissioners can approve up to $20,000. Because we went to the credit card system, that every department has their own credit card system, each department has a $5,000 limit. So anytime they need to make a purchase automatically over $5,000, they'd have to come to the clerk's office to use their version of the credit card to make the purchase anyway. So you have some checks and balances in there, and I think the spending policy says something in there that it can be further restricted per whatever commissioner wants. So I don't know if we wanna have that as a policy in general, or just have it per department, that you make the policy in your own department.
I just think $2,500, if, you know, I would think that any commissioner, that $2,500 threshold, I mean, if the electric department has to buy tools, and the bill is, let's say, you know, $400, I'm pretty sure that, you know, okay, if you need it, go get it. But if we're talking about buying a piece of equipment that's above and beyond $2,500, I would think that the commissioner's gonna say, well, hey, you know, I kinda wanna know about this before the bill comes, and I just have to sign for it. So that's all I'm driving at here. Because I'd like to formalize it, if we need a motion, I'll make a motion, but...
Well, my question is, how do you... So we could do that via, like, an ordinance in place, that puts a spending cap on it. We could update the purchasing policy, to put something in there specific, because I think right now, it's whatever the commissioner wants in that department, up to 5,000, before they gotta come to the clerk's office. We could put something in there, if everybody wants to approve that, to say, there's a max limit on that. Or do you wanna leave it as carte blanche, and every commissioner can write their own policy to their departments? That's what I'm saying. How do you want to do that?
This is where the group can join in. I gave you my perspective, so I would love to hear the others. I can only speak for myself.
Thoughts?
I'm the one that suggested $2,500, so I'm fine with doing it, whichever way you wanna do it, whether it's department-specific, or whether it's by ordinance.
You guys have the bigger-ticket items sometimes and stuff, any concerns about that? Do you want your guys coming to you if anytime they need to make a purchase of more than $2,500, or...
No, I haven't come to me if it's even under $1,000, so, and I appreciate it. I mean, I'll go with the body, but I don't have an issue.
Commissioner Albridge?
I believe if our finance commissioner is asking to do this, I believe we should implement it.
So do we just wanna update it? The easiest method would be to make a modification to the purchasing policy, and just put a line in there that any department head that wants to purchase more than $2,500 must have permission from the...
Commissioner having oversight.
Yeah. That'd be the easiest way to do it, unless you wanna put something together via an ordinance. Thoughts?
Let's start with the purchase policy, and then by the next meeting, we can, if we have to, we can revisit it and talk about the ordinance part of it. I'm not gonna make the attorney draft an ordinance, if we can do it via the policy.
Okay, how about I make an updated line to the purchasing policy, and I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and you can take a look at it and see if you like the wording of that.
I think that'd be wonderful.
All right. Sounds good.
And we're gonna table this until next meeting?
Yep, I'll either draft something, or share something with Commissioner Steph Nellie for a draft for it, then.
And the rest of us as well, I hope.
Yep. 23, new business, I don't have any items listed there. 24, public comments over any item.
I just wanted to add to Mr. Steph Nellie's comments, that I received a letter from the city stating on September 18th, what they were offering, and I was told that I needed to contact Attorney Pat Berry if I had any questions. And Attorney Pat Berry is not in the office until the 9th, and I attempted to call last Friday, and he also was off last Friday. In the meantime, I also tried to call the city clerk's office and never got a phone call back. So there has been effort made on my part to try to communicate with the city, and I also like to say that I currently don't have an attorney, and so that is absolutely unfair to state that.
Thank you.
Sir, I do apologize, one moment, please. Going back to our last discussion, are we tabling that until...
It was just on there for discussion. It was on there for discussion. So it'll be brought up at the next meeting again for discussion.
Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Alex Sienza, and I wanna say, 65 years in Oglesby, my first council meeting. I'm very disappointed and hurt. I voted for each and every one of you, believe it or not. I'm really hurt by the actions, and I wholeheartedly believe that minutes of the meeting should be as detailed as possible, because if we add minutes to the meeting, the way you and Becky told us down in the basement, we'd know. Why, two months after, why did you wait till the hole was dug to bring this up to us? This could've all been settled before the hole was ever done. Two months that was marred. We were told it was because of a complaint. Well, all those neighbors were here today, and not one of them said a word. So why are you doing this to my daughter? She just wants to build a house. You said this would be rectified quickly. We ain't gonna build this house this year in no possible way. And why do we have to take just what you said? The city made an offer, but it doesn't consider half the stuff that's gotta be done. It's totally unfair, I'm so disappointed. I wanted to build a house this year, too. I was gonna start, but because she can't start, I can't start. It's a shame. Please do one thing for you guys, work together. Stop this bitter and fight. It's very disappointing. I don't think I'll ever come to another council meeting to listen to you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd like to reiterate, Mr. Steph Nellie, that you made that process go quickly, that is very untrue.
Okay.
When you asked for documents, my daughter turned circles and jumped hoops to get all that stuff as quickly as humanly possible. I was with her every moment, of every conversation, of every visit she made to gather that information. So you're... My biggest problem with you is I want the truth. I don't want your lies.
I didn't lie about anything. Everything that I said, Mrs. Sienza, was factual.
Let me finish my comments. I have the floor. When you called my daughter and told her after that meeting that her building permit
When you called my daughter and told her after that meeting that her building permit was approved, you read, you said, "Yes, I have the document right here, thirty feet from the curb." You said that. I know what you said and she.
Were you on the phone?
I was there, she was speakerphone.
No.
I would.
And that's not what I said, respectfully.
Would you please let me finish? You are the only one that talks in this whole meeting. Anyways, um, you told her that and that there would be nothing else far, going forward, would be no problems. It was two weeks doing that building permit that takes five days normally. So, your little statement about that we hurried it up was very untrue. I don't appreciate it, I want you to be truthful. You made a mistake, the city needs to own up to it and move on, not bury it on her back or his back because they want to build a house in this town. If you've got forty thousand dollars you want to spend extra, this house is costing eighty thousand more than any house prior. The taxes on it are going to be humongous. You gave away lots in that subdivision on that road that didn't have to build houses. So, you're not getting the tax dollars from all those lots that you did that for. But she's going to pay. Don't you think it's time, say, "Hey, own up to it as a man, I made a mistake, let's give them the, the variance and let's move on." Then you correct it when you change the ordinance, not try to change the ordinance as she's trying to get a building permit of things that were not in that ordinance she required. She complied with every one of them, everyone here request, to no avail. We, she asked you on the phone, "Is there any other paperwork with regards to the thirty feet from the curb she needs to file?" You said, "Nope, right here." And we also asked the building, uh, commis, or, uh, inspector several times. But the reason is because nobody else had to file a variance, so why should she? There's houses that are six feet from the property line, they should be eight feet. There's driveways that are buttoned up against each other and need to be three or five feet from each other. There's all kinds of, uh, ordinances that have been violated. Now, we're going to decide when there's four lots left in the subdivision to balance all that on her and him. Would you, how would you like if it were your daughter or your son? I think you might think twice about it. The economy isn't good the way it is. This is already going to cost up, rising cement costs, the availability of cement, the contractor bids that she's had since June. And I also want to make one further comment when you are all sitting here, Mr. Stefanoelli's going, making faces. I don't think that's very professional. I was the butt of a joke when Mr. Rivera was mayor and one of the commissioners, or actually, it was Mr. Rivera that said, "I wouldn't want to have to deal with her beating me." I thought that was so hurtful and disrespectful. I was also told in that meeting, when Becky and Mr. Stefanoelli admitted the mistake by this, uh, fire there, that I couldn't talk. That's a violation of my constitutional rights. And I've never brought it up to this time and I've never been to a council meeting either, but all of this hurts. We have been here over forty years, upstanding citizens of this town, to be treated like this. And to watch you guys all make kind of jerks of yourselves, it's really appalling not being a professional. Very sad, I hope you change it because this town ain't going nowhere if you don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a comment to make about, uh, this fiasco, about who has the right to terminate somebody. Um, I've got a fairly decent background. I've attended labor law classes through the IBW at Chicago and Washington DC, at the University of Illinois, at the University of Wisconsin, and George B. Labor Institute in Washington DC. Gentlemen, you need to use some common sense. If you're going to terminate somebody, you have to have just cause and you should have a check and balance. If you don't have a check and balance, you're going to put this city in a very lifeless situation. You have a rogue person who decides to terminate somebody with no factual grounds. The city is going to be responsible. We've had a history of, of this. Tom Martin is an example. We could have had some other, uh, history, but fortunately, the city of Olvisby took the right steps. So, please, use some common sense. And as far as getting an attorney's opinion, as Pat knows, you can get a lot of it. I spent twenty-eight years in the union office, the last twelve years as business manager, I won eighty percent of my arbitrations and cases.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There's no other public comments, we will move on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Stefanoelli.
Uh, the clerk's office staff will be provided, uh, some basic compliance training to help with our insurance rates and, uh, foster a more pleasant and productive environment. Uh, I'm going to be conducting some, uh, personnel training, uh, with the assistant clerk. The iPads came in, so I'm hoping that in the next couple of meetings here, we can, uh, switch to a di, digital format and eliminate all this paper. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Udis?
I just want to kind of mimic Mr. Sienza's, um, comments up on the podium. We need to absolutely do away with this circus act that we have going on as a council right now. It's embarrassing, there's all this grandstanding going on, um, by reading these, these prepared statements that are nothing more than trying to slam an, another elected official in peer that sits up here at this table. And that behavior is wrong and we have to stop it and it has to start with the mayor and that's my statement.
Thank you much. Commissioner McDermott?
Well, I agree with Udis, we need to start being more professional, okay? We're working together, let's make Olvisby better, all right? Okay, currently, branch removal is taking place. Uh, I hope everybody's got their branches out on the street, the berms. Uh, they'll be continuing doing that throughout this week. October twenty-third, we're going to start, uh, doing lead facts. Monday and Tuesday, east of Columbia Avenue and north of Walnut Street to Dry Bridge. On Wednesday, it'll be west of Columbia Avenue, east of Dry Bridge, Fitzgerald Avenue, East Mormon, Layit, Jones, and Crockett Streets. Thursday, it's east, east of Columbia, south of Walnut to Dry Bridge. Put them out on the berm, they'll pick, the city will pick them up for you, all right? Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you much. Commissioner, Commissioner Baldridge?
Uh, I'd like to state that our apprentice has completed his two weeks of apprenticeship classes in Florida. We're glad to have him back. He got a commendation from his teacher stating that he was a very good, uh, employee and we're lucky to have him. I agree with that. Our Harvest Fest will be October twenty-first. Uh, we hope you participate in the Scarecrow Harvest Contest. Um, it's the second annual one, clubs, businesses, schools, individuals, families, and organizations are allowed to, or are encouraged to participate. Uh, that'll be done by Friday and judging will be Saturday, I believe. That's all I have.
Thank you much. Mayor's report. Um, Halloween, uh, this year's going to be five to seven. I think it mer, marries up with the other cities, uh, as well. Um, Harvest Fest, obviously, the twenty-first, there's a lot of great things for it, please check it out. Um, also, just want to echo what Commissioner Baldridge said. This is the second year of the Scarecrow Contest. Usually, sometimes when you have the first year, you're always worried like how good something's going to be. And I will admit, we are always being put on something pretty special. Last year, there was a lot of fantastic displays. Um, what we have out there already is fantastic. Somehow, they're going to make it better. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to participate yet, um, consider doing so. Um, if you want to take a look at them, please do, it's fantastic. Uh, the only thing I will add is I, I will echo, you know, we, we've had some issues here with some disagreements. Um, I will say, whether people believe me or not, my goal is not to try to make somebody look bad up here. But I do believe that when people do things that are either dishonest or the attempt to be dishonest, people need to be held accountable for that.
Oh, my God.
So, um, I, I don't, I, I won't, I won't be changing my ways. When somebody does something that I think tries to harm or hurt other things, uh, the, the sad thing is I feel like it's a fight for everything. And I do like to try to pick my battles, but lately, the, the fights I'm making are for, I, I think that are things that are critical. Things that'll make a difference in this city that potentially could, I mean, we, we have evidence in, in this, uh, city of things that, uh, people have abused authority a lot. And we have, in my opinion, people here that want to, uh, abuse authority. And I'm, I'm going to do my best to my ability, I, I have to represent the city in the, in their best interest. So, I don't see myself changing on how that is. As long as you're honest in, uh, about what you do in your actions, that's all you can have, okay? That's all I have. I don't believe we have an executive session unless somebody had something new to bring up.
Final line between slander and.
In that, um, number twenty-eight, adjournment, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Hi.
Udis?
Hi.
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 Hi. Do you have copy of this?
Becky, what's this? What's this? Yeah, I probably.
What was? What is the city got in?
So, the problem is the building that built that house, it keeps you on our cartons. We talked about it, saying number twenty-five feet from the curb, ish, these something's even closer. The city would have an action. Basically, fifteen and a half meters from the property, which it doesn't state on there.
Did you ask them what was there?
Subdivision plan, it just says thirty feet. We were told by the city's.
Well, from my understanding, I think what I, what I was hoping was they rectify it, or it's that, or that they offer. Are you saying that's the engineering one they locked out?
This, the engineering is here, like, the recommendations are there.
Does that have a name, do you, does that have a name? So, wait a minute, this is.
The thing is, if you don't know, you find somebody.
Yeah, and that's what they should have done.
They're trying to get on the record.
They have to pay what I have, like, I can't.
Did you, did you provide what the, what you're supposed to do?
Okay. I want to go look at that, I want to, I want to figure that out. What would happen?
You're saying that, well, not over, too far.
There, there is some.
They made that concrete.
They all wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
That's already. Another thirty thousand.
The extra driveway costs.
I do feel free with something. And then when he got back, I was lucky, I was lucky, I was lucky.
Well, no problem, I understand. Well, I've been told that a few times. You heard my comment, I think we need to table it.
As you know, I'm a little frustrated. There should be no, what, what is the value of not like? What is, what is, what is the value of letting him have that?
I don't, I don't like table things. Sometimes I understand you have to, but I want to make a motion when you're back.
Well, my understanding is they can't, because it doesn't transmit their wiring. She got, she got the various money understanding because, um, in her backyard.
I appreciate it.
She puts it there.
Barry.
That's, that's.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not.
You're welcome. You know what I'm talking about, right?
I do. It's not, I'm just saying it's not.
No, let him.
We'll let you look at it that way. Let me find out why that.
I'm going to tell you, this is the exact document, it says right there. So, I don't know what they're, they're questioning about. So, I just want to know, like, do I need to meet with them, like, what, where, what am I doing?
Well, you know, we don't have any decision about your experience and I think the feeling I'm getting both from the. No. Is that I, I told you my middle name, right? I, I think that is going to be, you made the house back, which I know is what you want in here and trying to work out some financial compensation to allow that all to occur, so you can get moving on your.
I just want to make all costs, whatever it costs, that I'll repay. But she didn't create this, they did for a building.
But, 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 can I interrupt here? It, it seems to me that I've been told that some of the costs that you want to, uh, be repaid are for like the additional width of the driveway. Well, that's what is required by putting the house where it was supposed to be.
But you put it with less than.
Well, but the, but, the city, the city would not agree to repay you those kind of costs. They're going to repay you everything related to.
Whatever the air was.
Yeah, and even the dirt, I think is a, is a reasonable request.
Any air.
Those are things we need to talk about.
I don't understand.
Whatever airs the city means.
I totally understand what you're talking about.
What if I say we can't afford it, then what?
Then your house, then your house probably won't get built, you, I just have to.
So, what if, what if you. Are you saying that there's absolutely no way they're going to give a variance because that's what I got?